Thank you. Good evening. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal hearing for August 18th, 2022 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2023. This hearing of the subcommittee is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure that this hearing of the subcommittee is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep the video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Again, if you are connected by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand and star six to unmute yourself. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Fortune?
Evening, Madam Chair.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening. Mr. Fortune, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is any deferrals or withdrawals to those five o'clock cases. If you can give me the address first, you are deferring or withdrawing. Hearing now, I'll call the first case, calling DOA 565-482-26 Union Avenue. This is to install a curb cut and driveway for two parking spaces. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of area of accessory uses, Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking and loading, design and maneuverability, and Article 55, Section 9, usable open spaces insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, one second. There is a raised hand here. Let me just get to it. Oh, Jake Lisi, that's you. Let me make you a panelist.
My name is Fred Vedderline. I live at 2628 Union Avenue.
So please, first of all, tell us, is this... So it looks like these are two wood-story frame buildings. Is this... And which building is the parking connected to and is it owner occupied?
Can I just start an introduction quickly?
No, I just want to know those questions, responses to those questions now.
I live in the first house, which is number 26, and the back house is my tenant. And the intention is that each house would have a parking spot.
Okay, I understand that this particular project and this particular request came to this board before, so please tell us what the previous proposal was and what this proposal is.
Actually, it didn't come to the board before. It was, I filed the appeal, I think it was 2014, and I went to the neighborhood and I didn't have, I didn't really have the support, so I didn't follow through. So I've never been to the board for this.
Okay, because, okay, so go ahead and tell us what you're proposing to do.
Okay, so I just want to say I'm a 41-year resident of Jamaica Plain, and this is the 10th year I've had this property.
Okay, just tell us about the facts of the proposal. We have other applicants behind you, so we would like you to be very precise about your proposal.
I have, do you mean the other property, my property? Are you asking about my property?
Yes, the proposal that's in front of us. Please talk us through that.
Okay, so I have the first house, it's a single family. The house behind me is a single family. I have a couple living there who are my tenants. So the, and I guess I basically want to say the driveway, I pushed it back here to get it away from the street rather than being in the front of the house. And I also have an egress along the side of the house. You see on the right side, that's a three-foot egress that goes all the way to the street. So that's for safety.
Okay, so you're proposing, is there, so tell us about, what is the street where the wide driveway is proposed? Or the second dwelling is? What is that street?
This, the top of the drawing shows Union Street.
Okay.
And the top of the drawing is Union Street. So the driveway starts there and you can see the 10-foot width of the curb cut. And then the driveway goes back. It's a 10-foot width along the side of the house, back to the parking spaces that are labeled parking spaces.
Okay, so tell me, is there parking on that side of the street, on Union Street?
Yes, there is. There's, not on the opposite side, but there is on this side. But I'd give up one parking space but gain two. The street would lose two cars because it's a tandem parking situation.
Okay, um, let's see. How are the plans, Ms. Better Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoken on this. I don't know if Mr. D'Amico is on.
It doesn't look like he's on?
I'd like to put his comments in for the record.
Okay.
He got in 26 Union Avenue. He says it's okay. He believes that the curb cut should be reduced to 12 feet.
Okay, um, okay. So is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board some background information on the community process. Our office held in the Butters meeting on March 17th. It was heavily attended by residents and Director Butters on Union Ave. While there was a lot of support from what is essentially a curb cut application, there were some concerns raised by two Director Butters regarding emergency egress in parking, as apparently it's very scarce in that part of the neighborhood. The Jamaica Plain, the JPNC zoning subcommittee voted not to oppose this proposal. At this time, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have letters of support and opposition as the Mayor's Office spoke of.
And Madam Chair, I do have a few raised hands here. I'll start with Tess. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
So I'm Tess La Snack. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm at 30 Union Ave. So we are a direct of butter. We spoke in favor. I just, sorry, the person who spoke before, when he said there were two direct Butters who opposed, I think that's inaccurate because only one.
Since you have the floor, please tell us about your support or opposition so that we can then hear from other people.
All right, so we're in support of it. I mean, we have a similar driveway. We're able to shovel snow. People are able to walk to our house between the car and the fence.
Thank you.
Okay, Alex?
Madam Chair, I have someone next to me, a neighbor who'd like to speak.
Alex here unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Alex Gruyef. I'm a director butter to Fred's property. The address is 30 Union Ave. On the plans, I am the house behind Marie Turley's house. I am in support of Fred's proposal. He's been a good neighbor, takes care of his property. I think, Matt, we add one more parking spot on the street. And I am familiar with a number of neighbors on the street that have similar parking arrangements and have no problem with managing those arrangements.
Okay, and Tess, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Carrie.
Okay, I think I have no additional raised hands. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I have a neighbor here. He'd like to speak. His name is Andrew Lynch. He lives on Union Ave.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. My name is Andrew Lynch. I'm from 64 Union Avenue in Jamaica Plain, and I'd like to add my support for Mr. Vedderline's request for off-street parking and a curb cut. I mean, it's a simple case of math. He takes away one spot on the street and adds, takes two cars off the street.
So, thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm Marie Charlie. Marie?
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, yep.
Hi, my name is Marie Turley. I live at 32 Union Avenue. I am a direct of butter. And again, this is not about any of our service or residency in the neighborhood. It's about the proposal. With all due respect, Connor, there was not a vote of support at the JP Neighborhood Council. It was heard twice, and at no time was there a vote to support the proposal. What we're really here about today is a significant documentation that has been provided to the board in anticipation of this hearing. What is unique about this is that it's a double pork chop lot. So I'm on one pork chop and Mr. Vedderline is on the other. This is an extremely dense location.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Turley. What do you mean by two pork chop lots? Both these buildings, from what I can gather, that are subject to this parking request are on the same lot?
But the lots that are butted are also pork chops. So you have four houses in close proximity.
Okay.
Extremely close. I provided a slide to show that with my letter in opposition. And because we don't have access to the screen, I can't show it to you. But literally, you can reach out from 28 and touch 30R. We're extremely close. I would ask you to look at that documentation. I would also like to point out that currently, Mr. Vedderline does not park on the street. So we're not losing two cars on the street. We're privatizing one spot and not taking two cars off the street. He parks in the rear. Also, we provided for you documentation that Mr. Vedderline sent at the second JP Neighborhood Council meeting. And he did, and we appreciate, show both cars parked in the very narrow driveway. If you look at those documentation, you can see how very little space there is between where the cars are and where the wall of the houses. There's a question of entrance according to the BPDA guidelines for how you would enter from Union Avenue to the rear. So even though there's 10 feet width, in fact, three of it or so is necessary for the egress.
So, Mr. Turley, if I may summarize then, your concern is related, one, to density, two, to the number of actual parking spaces that will be taken off the street, and three, the closeness and the concern about hazard. Is that also your concern?
I can just sum it up with access of emergency vehicles, whether it's fire or ambulances with this particular proposed, and also the maneuverability, because JP, Union Avenue is a very busy pass-through. The cars, even though they would have each other's keys, every time they needed to maneuver, both cars would have to come out in the street. They're probably going to be idling, similarly with snow removal. So that really, this proposal is going to really impact the street in terms of deliveries, in terms of maneuverability, things that are pointed out within the rejection letter. This has come before, anecdotally on the street, we know that an effort was made by the previous owner to do this kind of a, to create a curb cut, and that was denied because of the narrowness, and they ended up having to have handicap parking in the front of the building at 26 Union. So it's the maneuverability and its impact on the street. It's the access of emergency vehicles, fire, et cetera, and also the proximity of the houses, just in terms of risk in general.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
No, Madam Chair, I have no addition.
Okay, given that, given that information.
Can I answer the?
No, 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 no. Okay, given that information in support and in opposition and the concerns raised, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with two proviso. One is to narrow the curb cut to 12 feet, and the second one is to have BPDA, BPDA design review to review the direct path of entry from the sidewalk to the building at the rear.
I would agree with that. I'll second that motion.
Hmm, I'm actually in opposition to this proposal. So I would suspect then it should probably go to the full board for discussion.
Correct, Madam Chair.
Yes, okay, so thank you both. So may I have then a motion for deferral to the full board?
I'll make that motion that we change it, defer this to the full board. We can do it next Tuesday, the 23rd.
Okay, so it's 8:23.
That'll be at 11:30.
Ms. Better?
I second that.
You second that? I too am in support. So we will see everybody on 8:23 at 11 o'clock.
11:30, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, 11:30.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1265152, 10 Carson Street. This is the asphalt paved driveway which can park three vehicles. Paved driveway in front of the house can let outside, let outside car move easier if the inside car needs to come out. This paved driveway is not for parking purposes. The violation is Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking and loading, and Article 65, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Is anybody on to 10 Carson Street?
There is a raised hand. One second. Alan B., is that, are you here for this project? I sent a request to unmute you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm the owner of 10 Carson Street. So I just want to mention that I would change our proposal to decrease the number of parking spaces from three to two. And then we also changed the asphalt paving to paver stones to solve the water flow's problem.
Okay, so please, before we go any further, is this a one or two family and is it owner occupied?
This is a single family.
And it's owner occupied?
Yes.
Okay, so just.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Mr. D'Amico spoke on this.
Yeah.
And he said he doesn't have, the plans that he has should reflect more detail, and it only shows one vehicle.
Yes, that's what we see on the screen. So please go ahead and tell us what you're proposing to do. I'm having a little bit of a hard time understanding these plans, so please talk us through it and tell us what you're proposing to do.
It seems like this plan, it's the old one, because I updated the new one on the system and sent it to an officer.
Okay, so how about this? We'll call you back, and in the meantime, they will look for what you resubmitted, okay? So if anybody's here for Carson Street, please stay on, and then we will return to this project.
I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Calling the next case, calling DOA 12955987 Rock Road. This is to remove an old rear deck and build a bathroom addition and a new rear deck. The violation is Article 69, Section 9, side yard is sufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
One second, I see if we can stand here. To this case?
Hi, yes, I'm the daughter of the owner, and I also reside here. My name is, full name is Alex Pierre.
Alex Pierre, okay, so tell us what's being proposed.
So right now, we are proposing to redo the back deck and in addition, within that deck, adding a bathroom in there. So taking away portion of that deck is what, that's already existing. So we're not adding any extra footing to that part of the the back area of the house, we're just enclosing portion of the deck to create a bathroom in there.
Okay, and this bathroom would be attached to the house, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and how, okay, how are the plans, Ms. Better?
The plans are adequate.
Sorry. Anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. We're unaware of any concerns with this project. Thank you.
Hello, hello? Hello?
I'm trying to have no raised hands.
Can I speak to, my name is Robert Julian. My name is Robert Julian.
Yes, what is your address?
My address?
Mm-hmm.
I'm at 52 Edlon Wood. My street is parallel to the, and Alex Pierre House.
Are you in support or in opposition?
I'm a supporter. I would like the city to approve the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wish I had no additional raised hands.
Okay, um, do we have the BPDA's recommendation on this? I did not see it. I'm assuming not, but.
Yes.
We do have.
They approved it.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support.
Okay, do we have to go back to those other ones and do those all over?
Let's do that at the end, okay?
Okay. Tom says it's fine.
Oh, Tom says it's fine, okay.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1332110200 Turtle Pond Parkway. Reframing of the second floor to extend the second-story height footprint of an existing single family. Scope also includes a new covered entry porch. The violation is Article 69, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Stephen Pettipass. I'm the architect of this project. I live at 7 Simpson Street in West Roxbury. This is an existing non-conforming house where the front yard is only 20 feet, required to be 25. We are extending that non-conformity to the second floor, adding approximately 315 additional square feet to the second floor, and then putting an attic on top of that, and also extending the existing entryway over the actual landing of the front porch.
Okay, can I just see what, tell us what page we should be looking at to see what this will look like once it's been done?
Keep scrolling down, you'll see the existing floor plans. These are the proposed floor plans. And as you keep, this is the second floor with the section. Scroll down one more time, and you'll see that these are the exterior elevations.
Okay, so, okay.
Just for clarification, I believe there was an error on the drawing. I think you noted basement plan, but that was supposed to be second floor. Is that correct?
Yes, that is probably, probably correct. I do that quite often, actually.
Okay, and is this owner occupied?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and that garage that's there is going to remain, right?
Yes, it's existing.
Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Better Barazza?
Madam Chair, other than what I just noted, they're fine.
Anybody here to either speak in support or in opposition?
My apologies, Madam Chair. Our liaison is out, and I don't have the notes in front of me from the community process. So with that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
If you'd like, I can go over what we did. We had a fairly successful Butters meeting. I believe only two Butters showed up. Both were in favor, and we had a mismatch with the community service. And when we tried to reschedule, they just sent the notice back saying, basically, they approved it because it's such a simple project.
Okay, Ms. Ambassador, any raised hands?
No raised. Oh, one just popped up. One second. Okay, Zoom user, I'm sending a request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Frederick Turkowski and David Moyer. Our address is 204 Turtle Pond Parkway for the neighbors.
And are you in support or in opposition?
In support.
Thank you so much.
I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so, Ms. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Arajo is also in support, so motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 133519515 Maple Street. This is to replace 77 feet of six-foot fence with 77 feet of eight-foot fence on the back right of the property, from the corner of garage to the corner of the lot. The goal is to reduce the noise from center street and parking lot on the other side of the fence. The violation is Article 2A, Section 01, yard regulations. Within a required side yard, no planting other than shade trees shall be maintained more than six feet above the average national grade. Set yard and no structure shall be erected except. Name and address for the record, please. Anybody from Maple Street on?
There's a hand that just showed up. One second. Jasmine?
We're here. James Sullivan, are you here for this proposal?
Yes, yeah, I'm the contractor but also owner too. And I'm here with Christine Chelly, who's also the owner.
Okay, please put your name and address on the record. Tell us if this is a one-family or two-family, and tell us whether it's owner occupied.
Single-family owner occupied.
And tell us what you're proposing?
Replace an existing wooden six-foot fence that's 77 feet long within eight-foot fence. Uh, for, we also have a pool in the back too. Um, and the line of sight from Center Street and from the back parking lot of the dental office and a funeral home is pretty clear into the yard, so we want to just reduce the view, uh, so no one can really see that there's a pool there, also sound buffering, uh, privacy on our end. Uh, because it is uh facing a parking lot of a dental office and a funeral home, and we can view Center Street too.
Okay, and what kind of fence is this?
Uh, existing one is a six-foot stockade fence, which I think is pine, uh, we would be replacing it with an eight-foot cedar fence.
Okay. Um, I'm not gonna comment on that pool, but there are regulations about enclosing pools. Um, so no stray people could take a tumble in the pool or hurt themselves in some way, so you may want to make sure that pool also meets all other regulations.
Yes.
Okay, uh, how are the plants, Ms. Beda Baraza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Anybody to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jake Lacy from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant went in front of the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council Zoning Committee on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, where they received a vote of support five to zero. We have not received any letters of opposition, and at this time, we defer to this decision of the board, thank you.
I'm trying to have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review to review the length, the design and the material of the fence, and to also provide a step down uh near their side side yard.
And that's for visibility? Miss Better?
Yes, because if if they're just doing the corner closer to their to the front is a residential structure, so we just want to be careful on how that fence side yard is designed. To look at some planting as well.
And we asked the BPDA to recommend planting, okay, um, so, um, Fortune?
Hi.
Beda Baraza?
I.
Arajo is also in support, so you're all set with approval with with those provisos, uh, so good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one three three seven one zero four twenty-five Roston Road. This is the second floor dormer addition with half bathroom, second floor installation to finishes, heat pump installation and associated appropriate tasks appropriate. Violation Article sixty-seven, section nine, the floor ratio is excessive. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is sufficient, and Article sixty-seven, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Frank Dill, twenty-seven Leslie Road Belmont, and I'm here as an architect representing the property owners.
And is this a one family or two family and is it owner occupied?
It it's a one family and it's owner occupied.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed.
Well, uh, there's an existing Cape style house and we are proposing a single shed dormer on the rear of the house.
Okay, and and so the shed dormer would, and what's the distance between the rear of that building and um the the yard?
Uh, the, sorry, the rear of the building to the property line is about thirty-eight feet, one inch. Is that what you were asking?
Yep, and this and the side yard is, what is the the distance to the side yard?
The the closest point to the existing house is three foot three, um, the closest point uh, from the property line to the uh proposed dormer is five foot one. And we believe the side yard is reduced in this case because of the narrow lot to eight feet.
Okay, um, how are the plants, Ms. Beda Baraza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Uh, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services, at this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment to the board, uh, some back background information on the community process, our office held a butters meeting on June twenty-first. Uh, there were some some concerns from director butters regarding the dormer windows and what they perceived as a lack of privacy. Uh, this issue regarding the dormers was discussed privately between the butters and neighbors. Our office has received seventeen letters and statements of support and one letter of opposition regarding this proposal, thank you.
Secretary here, we have those letters of um support and opposition that the mayor's office told.
Thank you.
I do have a few raised hands here, I'll start with Niles. Can you state your name and address for the record, please, once I'm muted?
Good afternoon, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Niles Fouts of twenty Malverna Road. I am the director butter behind twenty-five Roston Road. And I object to the shed dormer being built as proposed, which will face my property. I want to be clear that I have no objection to building a dormer. My objection is where they propose it be built. Including the June twenty-first meeting, the proponents and I have spoken several times about my concerns regarding their plans. But have been unable to reach agreement on modifications. It is their desire, their wish to create more living space. But that desire, I would argue, does not uh create a hardship requiring variance approval as defined in chapter six sixty-five.
Okay, so tell us about um how this will affect you more precisely?
I would suggest if a variance is allowed, it will be injurious to my property as defined uh in chapter six sixty-five.
No, no, I want I want to know is, I know, I want to know, is it going to cast a shadow on you, I want to know.
Oh, okay.
Specifically, uh, what you anticipate the impact to be?
Um, it's going to cause more density because of the uh house and garage already. Um, which are on the backside of the house and my, the back of my house faces that. Also, the the creation of the dormer will cause uh loss of of the modicum of privacy I now enjoy. And replace that with like a fishbowl environment, which will take away the joy I have of living in the house.
Thank you. Thank you.
Emily, uh, one second, uh, can you state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Emily Walls, I'm at seventeen Roston Road, so I am the director butter on the side yard on the Roston Road's side.
And tell us whether you're in support or in opposition?
I am in support.
Okay, so then, because your side yard is five feet, one inch, okay, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, additional raised hands.
Okay, um, may I ask of the applicants, have you uh, um, explode the option of having your dormer on the front of the building?
Well, I I can address that, we we have looked at that option, um, that I guess is uh, even less in compliance than the dormer in the back, because it would be entirely in the front setback. Um, we're actually equally close to the neighbor across the street as we are to uh Niles in the rear. Uh, and there's actually no trees uh blocking that view. The owners found that it would be, you know, uh, very public to have the dormer on the front side.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
May I say something?
Can I, okay, so I'm gonna, um, this is a a board meeting. And I'd just like to move now to discussion with the board members, okay, so please, everybody mute yourself. Um, um, is there a BPDA recommendation?
Yes.
Please help us out, because I honestly didn't see that, but I may have just not, okay, go ahead.
Uh, the recommendation was the recommend, you you're asking if the BPDA made a recommendation?
Yeah.
They did make a recommendation for approval with special attention to design of dormer.
For design of dormer, okay, and as our planning uh agency, we we put weight into what they say, so may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review, paying special attention to the dormers.
I'll second that motion.
Do we want any additional screening? And buffering?
No, I see this as a very I, I, Madam Chair, I see a very modest addition and the butters are very far away.
Okay, okay, so that's so, uh, Fortune?
Hi.
Beda Baraza?
I.
Um, Arajo is also in support, so the 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 motion for approval with design review carries, uh, good luck.
Thank you.
And please continue talking with your butter, um, so that, you know, you 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 maintain as cordial a relationship as possible.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one three three seven four six six, four thirty-eight Main Street. This is an addition of a third floor and attic playroom, half-story and mudroom addition. These exist, existing first floor kitchen will be remodeled. Violation Article sixty-two, section twenty-five, structural restrictions and Article sixty-two, section eight. The building is excessive in stories, name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Timothy Sheehan, I'm the architect for the project, my clients are are, you know, are the homeowners and it's a single family.
Okay, but tell us what's being proposed?
What we'd like to do is add a story and a gable and and and, you know, attic playroom to an existing two-and-a-half-story house. Um, this is in a, I don't know, a thirty-unit development from the late eighties. And the house to our immediate left, number four thirty-eight Main Street is already at the three-and-a-half stories, so we just want to match exactly what's going on next door.
And that came before the sport?
Probably in nineteen eighty-seven, yes.
Okay, um, can you tell us which plan we should look at to see exactly what it might look like?
Yeah, go down, I think, I'm good, uh, I'll go up, I can't see which word it is, but it does only three drawings. Thank you. I'll go up, I didn't see it, I mean, I'll go up, there it is, that's that's the way it's gonna look. I've I've put in gray, hatch gray to show you what will be new, so the whole project is, they have an existing basement now that's exposed at the back. We'd like to create that, create, turn that into an office storage space, not a bedroom, the seven foot nine inches of headroom and it it it's a perfect space for it. Um, we'd like to put a door in an area way to get you up uh for access to the backyard from that uh basement level. Uh, the second floor, we would move, uh, change it around just to get stairs up to the new third floor, just matching what, you know, the floor plan from next door. And then to match next door, we're gonna do a gabled roof as well, and we'd like to put two hundred square feet up, there is a playroom or storage. Um, this house now is nine hundred and thirty-six square feet, and it's a family of five, so they just need.
Okay, um, how are the plants, Ms. Beda Baraza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services, at this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment to the board. Uh, some background information on the community process, uh, our office is unaware of any concerns at this time. Uh, we did share the plans with uh one of butter upon request, uh, but they did not follow through with our office. With that, we defer to the board, thank you.
I'm trying to have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, just wanted to let you know that the BPDA also made a recommendation. And the recommendation was to approve the project with BPDA Design Review. But to remove the basement conversion of habitable space due to the property being located in a coastal flood resilient overlay district.
Okay.
So I'm gonna put forward um a very similar motion.
Uh, please, so go ahead, do do, make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to put a motion forward for approval with two proviso. One is BPDA Design Review, and the second one is to remove the basement conversion of habitable space due to its proximity, due to its location of a coastal flood resilient overlay district.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so, um, Fortune?
Hi.
Beda Baraza?
I.
Arajo also in support, so motion with those provisos carries, good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one three three nine nine five six one twenty-seven Train Street. This is a proposed second floor addition to an existing one-story, single-family and new front porch. The violation is Article sixty-five, section nine, front yard is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, side yard is sufficient. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient, name and address for the record, please.
It's Lisa Bartlett, one twenty-seven Train Street, and my husband, Robert, is also here.
So tell us what you're proposing to do?
So we want to do a second floor addition, um, and also a new front porch, so the second floor addition will be, just be on the existing footprint of the house.
And so how many how many square feet is that?
Um, do you know that?
I think it'll be an additional thousand square feet.
A thousand square feet, and this is owner occupied?
Yes.
Okay, um. And has this particular project come before this board in the past?
No.
No, okay. Okay, so it's proposed entire second floor addition. Okay, so all these violations are existing violations. And tell us about the front porch, is it going to be an open or enclosed front porch?
Open.
Okay, how are the plants, Ms. Beda Baraza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. Our office held in a butters meeting for this project on July fifth. And there were no concerns from the community, at this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board, thank you.
I don't try to have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, Fortune?
Hi.
Beda Baraza?
I.
Arajo also, I see the motion for approval with Design Review carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one three four one four eight two seventy-four Baker Street. This is an attached two-car garage with playroom and bathroom above the garage. The violation is Article fifty-six, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient, name and address for the record, please.
Wait a minute, hi, this is Eileen Melville at seventy-four Baker Street, can you hear me?
Yes, please tell us what you're proposing to do.
Okay, I'm proposing for a two-car garage with a loft above it, playroom, bathroom, and um it'll be in the rear um, the rear part of the property. And it has a insufficiency of the.
Hold on, let's let's let's, uh, we just need to understand a little bit more clearly what you're proposing to do. So they see, so I see your um, your house, I see the proposed garage.
Yes.
Uh, explain, I I I I think I don't clearly understand if you're proposing to attach the garage to the house or you're proposing these uses inside the garage.
I'm opposing, I I'm going to, uh, what we want to um, attach the garage to the house, it'll be attached right, right down on that, you can see it on the the drawing on the right side there, where the electrical and everything will be attached to the home right by that bathroom on on the first floor in the porch.
Okay, so, um, so that's the proposed garage plant, so you're gonna put a bathroom, okay, got it.
No, the bathroom's already there, it's it's just, oh, I see, yes, inside.
And there's a little breezeway, and um, you're not proposing, because I see a a toilet there. You're not propose proposing any occupancy in that garage, are you?
No, we're not, that that's just basically storage in a arts and crafts area for me. So we we need the storage, and the other thing is, is we have a trailer outside with a car in it. And we'd like to put that inside the garage with with my car.
And that makes sense, okay?
And then I got, um, I had five letters sent in.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, please, uh, how are the plants, Ms. Beda Baraza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any, uh, anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jake Lacy from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant went in front of the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on June twenty-first. And the zoning committee voted seven zero in support of the project. We have not received any letters of opposition, and at this time, we defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have one letter of support and the uh West Roxbury uh neighborhood support.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna make a motion which is similar to the BPDA recommendation. And their motion is to approve the project with BPDA Design Review, but to turn the full bathroom into a half bath with no shower.
Okay, to half bath, okay. And you are in support to.
I'll support that as well.
Okay, so just for the checkoff list here, Fortune.
Aye.
Better Barasa.
Aye.
Around Joe also aye for motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 1343301, Ford Delano Park. This is to renovate the existing third floor bedroom, extend header height over the existing stairs and head under a A-frame and add a bathroom and laundry to the third floor. Violation Article 67, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 67, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Wellington? Should be on. Wellington Rossi, can you hear us? Can you unmute yourself? He's on as a panelist and not sure what's going on with his connect.
I don't think he can, he can, muted, he's still on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, so first, before you go into, yeah, first, put your name and address on the record. Tell us if this is a one family or a two family and if it's owner occupied.
Okay, my name is Wellington Rossi. The Ford Delano Park is a two-family.
It's a two-family and it's owner occupied or not?
It's two owners, yes.
Okay, got it, good. Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed.
What is proposed was that if you were still on the design there, it was just another A-frame that was existing already. A little A-frame on the, you can see the dot lines. And a little, a little dorm which raised the stairs, so the header height was, you know, too cold and comfortable to walking up to the third floor that was existing there. And the ba, just just to clarify, the bathroom and the laundry is under to the right side of the existing A-frame. So that was just inside of the existing area too. So actually, we just increased the square footage by eighty-six square feet. That's all it was.
So altogether, all this, all this addition is eighty-six square feet?
That'll be correct, yes.
Okay, okay, how are the plans, Miss Better Barasa?
The plans are adequate, Madam Chair.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process. Our office held in a butters meeting on July 13th. I know butters were in attendance and subsequently, no one reached out to our office. We understand the applicant also did reach out to the Longfellow Area Neighborhood Association. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
And no Longfellow does not, is nowhere near Delano Park.
Oh, I'm not sure, ma'am, I.
It's the, it's the other side of Rossi.
This is just the notes I have from Marley's.
Okay, yeah, okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review, paying special attention to the design of the dormer.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Fortune.
Aye.
Better Barasa.
Aye.
Arao Joe also in support, some motion for approval with design review carries. Good luck.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 135069316, Meredith Street. This is an extension of living space into the attic, new third floor bedroom and bathroom. The violation is Article 56, Section 8. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Margaret Darbaloff. Our address is sixteen Meredith Street in West Roxbury. It's a one, one family and it's owner occupied.
Thanks for being so succinct. So tell us what you're proposing to do.
We would like to finish our third floor to turn it into a bedroom with a full bath. And and that would include a dormer.
That would include a dormer. And how many square feet is this total?
There is, there is no addition to the, there's no extrusions on the, on the property. It would not add any square footage. It changes the far because of the five-foot, you know, wall that has to be done.
Okay. Okay, and, okay, how are the plans, Miss Better Barasa?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jake Lacy from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant, we as Office Neighborhood Services hosted a meeting with the applicant on July 14th, where the rear of butters voiced their support. And then the applicant also went in front of the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on July 25th, where they received a vote in support of seven to zero. Finally, we received six letters of support from a butters on the front and the sides of the properties as well. We have not received any letters of opposition, and at this time, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have, do we, we do have four letters of support.
Thank you. Um, may I have, Miss, Miss Ambassador?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands, thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review on next here.
Second that motion.
Fortune.
Aye.
Better Barasa.
Aye.
Around Joe also aye, some motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 1351812, Two Amelia Terrace. This is adding an addition to the top of the building for a second floor addition and attic space, storage space to the existing dwelling. The violation is Article 56, Section 8, front yard is insufficient. And Article 56, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Lauren Tremble. I'm here with my husband David. We resided Two Amelia Terrace. It's a owner occupied, single-family home.
Okay, tell us what you're proposing to do.
Our goal is to add a second story onto our single-story home. It does not change the footprint of the house.
Okay, and your, all these violations are existing violations?
Yes, they're all pre-existing.
And what's the total square foot addition that you're proposing?
Currently, right now, our house is a thousand square feet and we're adding a thousand square feet on top of the the first floor.
Okay, how are the plans, Miss Better Barasa?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here, is anybody here, can you, can you scroll down just a little bit? So we can have a look at the plans. Thank you, okay? Thank you. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jake Lacy from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant went in front of the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on June 21st, where they received a vote of support five to zero. We haven't received any letters of opposition. At this time, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have two support letters.
Miss Ambassador, anybody else?
I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
I'll second that motion.
Fortune.
Aye.
Better Barasa.
Aye.
Arao Joe's also aye, some motion for approval with design review carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 135968025, Farmington Road. This is to construct a rear three-story addition to an existing dwelling, including complete interior remodel, extension of living space to the lowest level, and a new rear deck and attached shed. Violation Article 10, Section 1, limitation of parking area. Article 56, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 56, Section 40, the application of dimensional regulation. The side yard of certain narrow lots, ten feet wide driveways required. Article 56, Section 40.1, conforming with existing building alignment. Article 56, Section 8, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article 56, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Ivan Hernandez, 111 Baker Street, on behalf of the homeowners. As stated, we're proposing a three-story rear addition to the existing.
Let me just ask you a couple of questions. Is this a single or a two-family and is it owner occupied?
A single and owner occupied, yes.
Okay, so please go ahead then and tell us what what's being proposed.
The proposal is for an addition in the back of the house, three stories. We're gonna be adding a open family room area on the first floor, extending the kitchen, family living area on the first floor, and then creating additional bedroom on the second floor, master bedroom suite. On the, in the basement area, part of the new basement area or the new basement area will be finished off. And then part of the existing basement area would also be finished off. There is a.
Okay, so a couple of questions. What's the occupancy of the basement proposed to be?
It's gonna be for recreational space for the home. And there's gonna be some mechanical area down there, but mainly recreational space. It's a walkout.
And, okay, and let's ask, and what what about the attic?
The attic would be, for the most part, unfinished. It's just gonna be a laundry, a room, a laundry space created up in the attic because there was no space on the second floor to fit it.
Okay, and then talk to us about the new rear deck and the attached shed.
Yeah, the the rear deck is a four-foot deep deck along the back of the house. And then there'll be a little bit of a rectangle deck area to the left. The reason that is, is that we had been asked to try to keep the setback alignment of the building in the back because of the parkway, the BFW Parkway. And so we adjusted, modified the drawings to accommodate the the wishes of the Public Works Department.
Okay. Um, then, okay, okay, got it. How are the plans, Miss Better Barasa?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jake Lacy from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a community meeting on May 10th with minimal community interest for this meeting. And then the applicant also went in front of the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on June 21st, where they received a vote of six zero in support. Our office also received three letters of support from the community with no letters of opposition. At this time, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we have those letters in Mayor's Office logo.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion with two proviso that'll be reviewed by the BPDA and also by the Department of Parks and Recreation, given that its location is within the Green Belt Protection Orly District.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Fortune.
Aye.
Better Barasa.
Aye.
Around Joe also in support, some motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Calling your next case, we'll be discussing, calling case BOA 13361892005, Dorchester Avenue. This is to extend the driveway to park vehicles on the side of the house. The violation is Article 65, Section 41, Austrian parking requirements. And Article 65, Section 9, residential dimensional regulations, insufficient usable open space. Name and address for the record, please.
Francine Times? Two thousand and five Dorchester Ave.
Okay, Ms. Times, tell us why you were deferred before or did you request a deferral?
No, they wanted measurements. That's why I'm having a second meeting. The first time, I just presented the plot plan for the for the area. But I presented pictures and measurements, so you can see where I'm gonna be parking my cars. Because I'm gonna have a section of the house or a section of the property asphalted. So I could, number one, prevent water from going into my property. And number two, easy access for me, maintenance-free as I get older.
Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico spoke on this. I don't know if you've seen his comments.
I have not.
Okay, this is, and regarding 2005 Dorchester Avenue, Ward 17, the plans are very poor and show one vehicle would be parked in the front yard.
Okay, so let's look at the revised drawings and see if that clarifies anything. Okay, so, so let's just see. So we have the.
There's another set.
Yeah.
It's not this. I think this one's with photos. There's another second set of drawings. It's two, it's almost like two plot plans.
Mr. D'Amico's comments from August 12th.
Okay, thank you. In the meantime, we're waiting for this to load. Is there anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, George Quinn with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted in a butters meeting for the proposal on May 15th. We heard no concerns from the community. At this time, our office will defer judgment to the board.
Thank you. Any other raised hands, Miss Ambassador?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, so let's look at the plans and see what we have before us.
Yeah, in regards to my comment, what I found very confusing was to understand a clear survey drawing of what's existing and then what's being proposed or what's being requested for variance.
Okay, so these are, let me just ask, Ms. Times, this is the revised drawing that we have in front of us?
Well, that's the drawing that you had from, 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 from a job that I was gonna do, but I had that abandoned.
Okay.
And then where I, and then where I have the pink shading is what I submitted before, just to kind of show where my parking, my extended parking is gonna be, because I'm not, that's what I'm doing.
Okay, and then where are the, where are the dimensions that you said you had?
I put them on the pictures. I submitted the pictures, so you can see it on the pictures.
Okay, I see, I get it. So, and what size? So let me just ask, you already have a curb cut?
Yes, I, yes, I already have a curb cut, so I don't need one.
So what's the, what's the length of that curb cut?
Well, I wrote everything on the picture, so you can see it. I I can't remember.
Okay, so please, can we go back to the photographs to see if they're annotated in any way?
Madam Chair, I, I would like to, is it possible to make a recommendation?
I do think we should just give the applicant a chance to talk through.
Okay.
Her proposal, because then we can make recommendations based on that. I'm hoping that Tuesday's meeting, because I noticed that the, that the city's internet is very slow or loading this morning. So I'm hoping Tuesday will have, you know, everything will be good. Okay, okay, perfect. So you have a fourteen-foot curb cut existing?
Yeah, and in the pictures are my two cars. I had to park them in the street because there was a dumpster in my driveway only because I was doing the inside of my house over.
Okay.
So, but I submitted all the pictures, so you can see everything. And then I wrote everything down to kind of correspond to pictures.
So ju- just for clarification, this is, so just for clarification, this is existing?
That's an existing curb cut right now, yeah.
Right.
And, okay, so basically, how many cars do you in proposing to park in? Two cars?
Yeah, the one, the one that's near the curb is mine and the one across the street is mine.
Okay, do you have a photo from the curb cut to the house?
I put all the pictures.
To the back of the garage.
Okay.
Right, so this is where I was gonna comment, that it seems like it's already, the work has been already done. There's, you know, gravel.
Nothing was done.
Way, a asphalt driveway. So it seems like, so what are we extending?
So, so basically, you're coming in to legalize something that was already there?
No, no, what I want is to extend it on the, on the right side. No, no, what I want is to extend it on the, on the right side of the house where the sunroom is. If you, if you continue to scroll down, I just personally wanted to kind of illustrate everything for you. This is where I want to park my cars.
Okay, I see, I see.
So then it would basically almost be front yard parking?
Well, that's the side of the house. That's not a front yard.
Yeah, that's side yard parking.
That's the side of the house. That, that's the back of the house. That's the side back.
So my question to you then is, if you park like this, how will you exit? You will, you will have to do a back out into the street in addition to making the turn versus a straight back out.
No, no, I mean, I mean, with one car, you know, with one car in a driveway, if I, if I back into the, into that space, it's not going to interfere with anything. I mean, because my driveway in front of the garage is already there, I just want to extend it off to the side because simply, simply, it's going to be easier for me in the wintertime. Because right now, the cars are in front of one another and it's difficult in the wintertime for me to try to, you know, you know, drive a vehicle if I want to drive one. This way, if one is parked off to the side, then at least I can, I can exit one without a problem. And if I want to drive another car, just move that one out. It's not going to be in the way of anything because I had.
Okay, so let me just ask you clearly. So your, your goal is to have one car park in the existing driveway and one, and room in the side yard for an additional car?
Right.
Okay, so you basically want to park them like a T or an L or something like that? Okay, so given that, my question is whether you need to have this much space dug up for your parking?
I would like that much space, only because that's what I want.
Okay, because we have to balance that against how it's going to affect the neighborhood, okay?
The neighborhood, all my neighborhood is in support of it.
No, I got it, I got it. But we have to take a step back and look at what it means, you know, from a great, from a bigger perspective. So, any, so given this information, and we've heard from, and, and so let's have everybody muted. What did the B P D A recommend on this?
The B P D A recommended a deferral that plans submitted to B P D in two thousand nineteen do not show layout and dimensions of a new parking space. My recommendation was to have a deferral and to actually have an accurate survey plot plan of what the applicant is proposing. And then they come to the floor.
And Madam Chair, this was back on July fourteenth. So the B P D A didn't see this after it was deferred.
Yeah.
They wouldn't see any.
Right. And, and Bob's recommendation is from August, did you say?
That's correct, August twelfth.
Because I'm wondering if we can do a approval with proviso limiting the, the space in that L that we have in the building in front of us to exactly the size of a parking spot. Do you think that would work, Ms. Better Barasa?
Um, I, I don't find the topology very similar to the side street, so I'm not, I'm not in favor.
And Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico does say it's front yard parking.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, okay, so.
It's a corner lot, so.
Yeah, yeah, so it's not side yard parking. How can we get a resolution to this? Um, trying to be, see if we can come up with anything that will meet the residents' needs but also not eat too much into, into the yard.
Madam Chair, I would make a suggestion that we maybe put this in front of the full board because if we do do something here, then someone else will want to do the same thing.
Yeah, got it. Yeah, that's, that's smart. So may I have that motion?
I'll make that motion for the deferral to the full board.
Okay. Ms. Better Barasa?
I, I like to, I like to second that, but encourage the applicant when they come to the full board to have an accurate survey plot plan.
Okay, Fortune?
Aye.
Better Barasa?
Aye.
Arao Joe also in support. Can you give us a date, please, Mr. Fortune?
Madam Chair, I think it's all going to hinge upon what Ms. Barasa just said. Can they get an accurate plot plan that we could actually all take a look at? Because we could put on for Tuesday, but I don't know how accurate to be able to get that.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't have that.
They're going to have the same question.
Yeah, all right, so let's do.
The same questions.
We can do, I think we need to push this out till October.
Okay.
One other, one other recommendation is to have the applicant just kind of have an informal conversation with B T D.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can do October first at eleven thirty.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, October fourth.
Okay, so Ms. Times, we will see you on October fourth at eleven thirty.
Do I have to come up, do I have to come up with new, a new plot plan? I mean, I have a plot planned. I paid for it already.
Hold on, hold on. So this is what we're trying to talk to you because we're trying to see how to make this work. So we recommend, one, that you talk to the Boston Transportation Department very specifically to Mr. Bob D'Amico and talk through this proposal with him. That's one thing. And the second thing is that you, we know that you've measured this out, but if you could have somebody do it as an official plot, as an official plan, that would be very helpful to us.
Yeah, but that's going to cost me too much money to do a survey.
Okay, so make sure that you talk to Mr. Mr. D'Amico. And we are recommending that you get a survey. It's up to you. But we will see you regardless on October fourth at eleven thirty, okay? Thank you. See you then.
Calling the next case, calling D O A one-three-four-three-one-two-zero-three-thirty K Street.
Bullshit.
Hi, I'm Taryn Ho.
Hold on, hold on two seconds, ma'am, hold on. This is to extend the driveway to park vehicles on, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. Hold on. This is to add a roof deck with headhouse. The violation is Article sixty-eight, section twenty-nine, roof structure restrictions, and Article sixty-eight, section eight. The billing height is excessive in feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Taryn Bone, and I'm the architect representing my client at three-thirty K Street, Unit Two.
And is it a one or a two-family?
It's a two-family and it's owner occupied.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed first and tell us why you've been deferred.
Sure, so we're proposing a roof deck. What you see there is, is, was to kind of show the Butters where we're located and not our roof deck proposal. So if you continue on in the plans, you'll see, you'll get to the roof deck proposal. But we deferred for a butter outreach.
Okay, so tell us what page we need to get to to see the, the deck. Is this it?
Yes, this is the deck. So this would be from behind. So you're kind of in the alley between the property behind K Street. And it, we, we wanted to tuck it, tuck it back and tuck it away from the street. So it's actually not visible from the street at all, unlike the, the two on either.
So tell us, what is this white box that we are seeing? What is?
The headhouse. If you go to the next image, it's much clearer. So that's the headhouse coming up from the top floor to the, the roof deck.
And have you explored hatch alternatives? Because this board generally is not an approval of headhouses, much more friendlier to hatches.
We, I, I was on the last meeting and did hear that. We did not change the design. We, you know, the two on either side both have headhouses. If you do go to the very first images, you'll see.
No, so the thing is, we can't gauge by what's happening around you because we don't know how many of those are legal or not. So the projects that we look at, we need to be very precise about our message to you as, to you on behalf of the applicant.
Sure, I mean, we would prefer to have a headhouse, but obviously, if you're, you know, if you make us do something.
Right, got it. Got it, got it, okay. Is, how are the plans, Ms. Better Barasa?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held a Butters meeting on June second. It was attended by a number of Butters. There was a lot of concerns raised in opposition from neighbors due to the concerns with noise that exists in the neighborhood as well as parties that have already occurred at that property. Also, neighbors asserted that the owner does not occupy that, that space. It's not owner occupied. The Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association opposed the project as well. We received five letters of opposition regarding the proposal. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have those letters in Mayor's Office spoke up.
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands here. I'll start with Anna. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Council, President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. Proof that has been a long source of loud, loud noise at all hours, deterrence and trash removal issues for several years in the area. Neighbors have expressed opposition to the proposed proof that can indicated that granting approval for another roof deck in the neighborhood will negatively impact the quality of life. Thank you.
Christine, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Christine Donilon. I'm, I live at three forty-seven K Street, but diagonal away from three thirty K. I was in the Butters meeting on June second also. And I am for opposite, opposing. The people that live, that own it do not live there. So I'm not sure what Taryn Bone is saying, that it's owner occupied. A father bought it for his young son that's in their twenties. And the police have been called multiple times for parties and noise violations. So I believe having, giving them a roof deck would violate any of the families that live around there. We have a ton of young families and children, and they're very noisy. So I don't think that they need a roof deck to have outdoor parties in.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Ms. Ambassador, okay, so given that information, may I have a motion?
Can I jump in quickly? This is David Lenhart, also with the, the project team with Coulson. Would it be possible to jump in?
David, you know, we were relying on Taryn, Taryn Bone to give the presentation. So give us some, put your name and address on the record and give us a quick qualification on this.
Yes, David Lenhart of Coulson stores at four hundred Atlantic. And just a couple of things to mention, that it, it is, it's own, family-owned. And there are two members of the family in, in the unit. And the, the family owns it is open to addressing noise concerns with provisos as to quiet hours.
You know, David, thank you for that. However, it just sounds like there has been continuous problems that, in fact, there should not be a need to put in quiet hours in a residential neighborhood. It's that you kind of, you know, have your ears and eyes open to know what's happening around you and to understand if there are young families or not. So I thank you for trying, but in the meantime, let's mute everybody and go to a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice.
And I'm going to second that motion.
Fortune?
Aye.
Better Barasa?
Aye.
Arao Joe also aye, so the motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go back to a case we called earlier on ten Carson. I'm going to call it back into the record, calling D O A one-two-six-five-one-five-two-ten Carson Street. This was an asphalt paved driveway with three, parked three vehicles. Paved the driveway at the front of the house, let the, let the outside car move easier. This paved driveway is not for parking purposes. Violation Article sixty-five, section forty-one, Austria parking and loading, and Article sixty-five, section nine, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
She's still on, second, you can unmute yourself.
As your hand up.
Yeah, can we make sure that we have the correct drawings? If you could pull, pull them up, please, whoever's manning the screen?
Sure, may I share my screen now?
No, I'm talking to the staff from I S D to see if they found the revised plans.
Hi, this is Tom.
Yeah?
I did look into the system. There, there is a different set of drawings that show three parking spaces. But I don't know if that was actually reviewed by I S D. This, this set of drawings that they reviewed at Stanford Board, I just have a one parking space.
Okay, so I'm sorry, ma'am, let's, we have you on the record. Maybe have a deferral to the next meeting so that we do everything correctly. We don't, we don't want to approve you, ma'am, and then have you come back because there's an issue that we did not see, okay? So we'd rather just clear this up.
I'm going to make a motion for deferral for the nine fifteen, September fifteenth meeting at five P M.
I second.
Not, I too am in support. So it's Fortune?
Aye.
Better Barasa?
Aye.
Arao Joe, aye. So we'll, we will see you on September fifteenth at five o'clock, okay? And we'll make sure that everything's been reviewed in the meantime. Thank you, everybody. The meeting is now adjourned.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm off.